The recording has started.
And good evening, everybody. This is Tom Flynn. I'd like to call the first meeting of the new term of the RTM to order. With Betsy Brown, Town Clerk, can we do the roll call, please?
Ed Bateson?
Here.
Veronica Monahan?
Here.
Amy O'Shea? Amy Roggerio? Karen McCormick? Cindy Perim?
Here.
Hal Schwartz?
Here.
Jeff Steele?
Here.
Alex Durrell? Jeff Galdenzi?
Present.
Tom Lambert?
Here.
Sharon Pastilly?
Here.
Laura Carson?
Here.
Alice Kelly? I see you. Marcy Spoiler?
Here.
Liz Zesma?
Here.
Will Diaz?
Here.
Josh Garstov?
Here.
Joe Seibert?
Here.
Jay Walk?
Here.
Steve Barrettts?
Here.
Hannah Gale?
Here.
Andy Grisafa?
Here.
Lisa Havy?
Here.
John Kuhn?
Yeah.
Mark McDermott?
Here.
Jill Vergara?
Jill's in the waiting room, Betsy. She can't get in.
Okay, thank you. Karen Wackerman?
Here.
Hank Ferrence? Pamela Iacono?
Here.
Christine Messina?
Here.
Pete Tallman? Christine Brown?
Here.
Drew Georgiatis?
Here.
Margaret Horton?
Here.
Kelly Sinto?
Here.
Hannah Starita?
Here.
Peter Britton? Frank Patisse?
Peter's indicating he is, um...
Here.
He says he's on hold. I don't know what that means.
There's the new link. We're not using the new link.
In the new link.
Did you get me, Betsy? It's Frank.
Yep. Is Alex Durrell on?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am, Betsy. Thank you.
Okay. Everyone's present.
Great. Thank you so much. At this point, I'd like everybody to please stand for the pledge of allegiance, and I'm going to ask Betsy Brown to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Betsy. And everyone, this is Tom Flynn from the Board of Selectmen. I'm pinch hitting for the first select woman tonight who is otherwise detained. It's my honor to be here to start your term. Congratulations on everybody's election to the RTM, a very important board here in town. Welcome to those newcomers. I'm sure you'll find this exciting and rewarding. And welcome back to a lot of old friends who have been on this board either in just the previous term or in terms before that. And I look forward to working with you over the next two years as we manage the town. At this point, it would be my honor to take nominations for moderator of this board. So if there's anyone who would like to nominate, please identify yourself. Karen Wackerman?
This is Karen.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Karen Wackerman, District Seven. It's my pleasure to nominate Mark McDermott for moderator.
Great. Do we have a second to that nomination? I saw Josh Garstov with a second. And are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Speak up, just because if I can't hear you. Seeing none, I'm going to call the nominations closed, and I'm going to call a vote. Should we do this person by person, or do you do it by voice vote to start? Betsy Brown?
We could do it as a voice vote.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm going to ask all in favor of Mark McDermott as moderator for this term of the RTM?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Here, none. Any abstentions? Seeing none, congratulations, Mark, and I'll turn it over to you and with you the best of luck in the new term, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much, Tom. I truly appreciate it, and I appreciate everybody's support and look forward to moving through the next year or two together as we do the job we were elected for to do for this town. I guess we will now open up the deputy moderator nominations. I'll open the floor to that. Do I have a nomination for deputy moderator? Alice Kelly?
I'd like to nominate Marcy Spoiler to be deputy moderator.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Jay Walk, thank you. Are there any other nominations? Okay, it's pretty quiet in there. I don't see anything, so we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor of Marcy Spoiler for deputy moderator? Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that's unanimous. Congratulations, Marcy.
Thank you.
I think I skipped over the meeting minutes from the October 25th meeting, so can I get a motion to approve those minutes? See Laura Carson and Representative Iacono. Does anybody have any comments or want to make any changes to anything? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Who was that?
Al Schwartz.
Thank you. So the meetings pass, meeting minutes pass for October 25th, 2021. Just before we get started, each one of these meetings at the beginning of the term, the moderator is supposed to remind everybody of their obligations of ethics, conduct, the Freedom of Information Act matters and conflicts of interest, so please keep all of that in mind while we proceed through the meetings through the next year or two and especially just starting tonight. So the next item on our agenda is to nominate and elect members to serve on the Special Legislative Management Committee. Do I have a motion for candidates there? Representative Iacono?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Pamela Iacono, District Eight, from the Republican Caucus. We would like to nominate myself and Jeff Steele, representative from District Two.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Representative Zesma?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Liz Zesma, District Four, and from our caucus, we are nominating myself, Cindy Perim, and Jill Vergara.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on those candidates from anybody? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, seeing none. Congratulations to Representative Steele Iacono, Representative Zesma, Representative Vergara, and Representative Perim. I think now, Mr. Kelly, we will be, we will be going, I guess, the other, what, thirty-five of us to the lobby?
I'll be moving you to the lobby, and it'll just take me a couple of minutes to do that.
Okay, and the SLMC will now go and form the committee, so we'll wait till they come back, everybody. Thank you. Thank you, David. Okay, so I guess the SLMC will now announce the committee assignments for everybody?
Yes, I'll do that. Cindy Perim, Secretary.
Once we've completed that, then we need to go to our voice-only conference calls. Does everybody know where they're supposed to go or have the telephone number required for that? Well, you'll have to meet your committee first, obviously, but... All right, so Representative Perim, we can go ahead with the assignments?
Okay, sounds good. Legislative and Administration, Josh Garstov, Drew Georgiatis, Tom Lambert, Jill Vergara, Karen Wackerman, Pamela Iacono, Christine Messina, Jeff Steele. Finance Committee, John Kuhn, Sharon Pastilly, Hal Schwartz, Joseph Seibert, Liz Zesma, Ed Bateson, Amy O'Shea, Amy Roggerio. Education and Recreation, Steve Barrettts, Margaret Horton, Alice Kelly, Mark McDermott, Marcy Spoiler, Peter Tallman, Alex Durrell, Kelly Sinto. Public Health and Safety, Will Diaz, Cindy Perim, Laura Carson, Jeff Galdenzi, Hank Ferrence, Veronica Monahan, Hannah Gale, and Story Tallman. Finally, Public Works and Planning, Jay Walk, Lisa Havy, Andrew Grisafa, sorry, Christine Brown, Frank Patisse, Karen McCormick, Peter Britton, and Ken Starita, and that's everything. Please mute if you're going to be in the same room taking the phone call when you step away from your computer to make the call.
Thank you, Representative Perim. So we'll all go into the calls now, and hopefully, I know people might want to catch up, but let's try to get back to the meeting as soon as possible so we can get on with the rest of the agenda. Thank you.
This is Margaret Horton, District Nine. Sorry, oh, sorry. Didn't know if I needed to wait to be called on. Ed and Rec, Marcy Spoiler as Chair, Peter Tallman as Vice Chair, and myself, Margaret Horton, as Secretary.
Thank you. Congratulations. We'll go next to LNA, whoever's presenting.
I can present. This is Tom Lambert, District Three. We have Josh Garstov as Chair. We have Drew Georgiatis as Vice Chair and myself as Secretary.
Thank you very much, Tom. Congratulations. And we'll go to Public Health and Safety. Whoever's presenting, please?
Jeff, did you want to present?
Sure. For Public Health and Safety, we have Laura Carson as Chair. Hank is Vice Chair, sorry, Hank, and I am Secretary, Jeff Galdenzi.
Thank you, Jeff. Congratulations, everybody there. Let's go to Public Works.
Sorry.
There you go.
Jay asked if I would give our slate, or our people, Jay as Chair, Frank Patisse as Vice Chair, and Lisa Havy and myself as Secretary. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And last but not least, we'll go to Finance. Whoever's presenting?
Joe Seibert, District Five. Chair is Sharon Pastilly. Vice Chair is Joe Seibert, and Secretary is John Kuhn.
Thank you very much, Joe, and congratulations to everybody. So, Betsy, you're all set there, and... Dave, I want to thank you for that transition through that, the rooms and the phone calls. I think that went pretty smoothly considering, so thank you. We really appreciate it. So we're going to move on to item number five, to here consider and act upon the establishment of a four-member committee on redistricting in accordance with 2.68.2 of the town charter, and I have a motion to approve. Representative Zesma, seconded by Representative Georgiatis. Okay. This committee will be formed by the SLMC and will come before us next month, so they'll have to call a meeting to form this committee. Hopefully, everybody's up to date on what's going on with redistricting in Connecticut, and we need to follow suit. So we need to take a vote. I'm sorry. So all those in favor?
Peter Britton, could you explain that further, what the redistricting is? Any detail on that?
Peter, I briefed you in caucus.
Yeah, sorry, I missed that.
Mark, I can explain it offline.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? If that motion carries unanimously. Okay, so then we have, next will be on the schedule, so item number six. Consider an act upon the following resolution recommended by the Town Clerk. Resolve that in accordance with the town charter and state filing rules, the representative town meeting hold their regular meetings for the year 2022 on the following dates: January 24th, February 28th, March 28th, April 6th, 7th, and 25th, May 2nd and 23rd, June 27th, July 25th, August 22nd, September 19th, October 24th, November 28th, and December 19th. Do I have a motion to approve? See Jay Walk, seconded by Jeff Galdenzi. Are there any comments on the calendar? The only thing I do see, Pam, Representative Iacono, you have a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd just like to throw out to see if there's any interest in canceling the July meeting so that the department heads are on notice, that we generally don't meet during the summer months. We can always call a special meeting if we need to, but we seem to go through this every year, and then there's a lot of consternation about it. Think if it's just off the calendar, we won't have to worry about it. I don't know how the body feels about it, but I just thought that I would put that out there to move to strike the July meeting.
I would agree. So you want to amend the calendar?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay. So there is a, you're making a motion. Do I have a second for that motion, Mr. Bateson?
Second.
So the motion on the table now is to strike July 25th from the calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any abstentions? I'm sorry, opposition? Abstentions? I think everybody's in favor, right? So that motion carries unanimously. Do you need that re-read or anything, Betsy, or you have it?
I'm good with that. Just so everyone knows, I checked the school calendar as well, so we don't interfere with school vacations or any holidays.
The only thing I see in it is we may have to change some committee meetings, like...
April.
April 18th is the school vacation week, so...
Yeah, we could do it the second week, jump the week of the 18th, and then have the meeting on the 25th, because we'll have budget meetings then, too.
Yeah, we can do that. We can figure that one out. And I know, I think the 21st is also President's Day. I don't know if that's a big deal or not, but... I mean, President's Day is a big deal, but I don't know if that would interfere with our ability to have a meeting.
I think Jill had a comment.
Yeah, if you can write your comments in the chat, it's easier for me to see that than scroll through all the screens. If you want to make a comment, please, I appreciate that. Representative Vergara, you have a comment?
Yeah, I had a question. I wanted to ask about the budget meeting, because I saw that there are only two scheduled in April, and sometimes we've had three. Does this limit our ability to schedule three if we would like to, if we only are scheduling two at this time?
I would think if we would need to schedule another day, we could do that, but the last couple of years, we've only really needed two days and really haven't used all that time.
One is enough.
Well, April 6th is my birthday. It seems to be every year, so I wouldn't mind missing one, no. Yeah, obviously, if we need it, we'll, I think when we get close to the time, we'll see what's going on and see what we have to do. Is that okay?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Item number seven. We've had a couple of fellows waiting around for a long time here to get voted on and talked, so item number seven is to here consider...
You need to vote. Excuse me, Mark, you need to vote on the amended calendar.
You didn't do that? Thank you, Betsy. All those in favor of the amended calendar striking? I thought we voted already.
We did.
Aye.
Aye.
You voted in amendment.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, number seven is to here consider and act upon the following appointment to the Greater Bridgeport Transit Authority as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Pierre Ratsky, Democrat 105, Westford Drive, term November 2018 through 2022, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Mitch Buets. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Georgiatis. Representative Wackerman for the second. Mr. Ratsky, thank you for volunteering. I know we all received the information about you in our packets, but if you'd like to give us a little brief history about yourself and why you would like to do this position?
Certainly. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. So I really welcome this opportunity to serve. Really great opportunity to serve our commuters, our seniors, people with disabilities, everyone who relies on our public transportation system. I'm a longtime commuter myself. I, you know, only bought a car about a year and a half ago, and I commute to work every day. And so I know the importance of having a reliable, accessible public transportation system. I also had the opportunity to sit in on the board's meeting weeks ago, and I was really heartened by the fact that they worked together. There was no acrimony. There was no partisanship. It was really a good collegial atmosphere, and they worked together to solve problems, so I'm excited to become part of that team. I used to live in New York. My family and I moved to Fairfield a little while back, and when I was in New York, I served on some bodies that went by Robert's Rules of Order and had, you know, similar formats. I'm familiar with how the meetings are conducted and how to work well in that kind of team environment. So I hope I have the opportunity to serve in this capacity, and I thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members of the body have any questions for Mr. Ratsky? I hope I'm pronouncing your name properly.
You are. Thanks.
Okay, I'm not seeing any, so we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Seeing none, it looks like that's passed unanimously. Congratulations, and thank you for your upcoming service.
Thank you all very much.
Take care now. Item number eight is to here consider and act upon the following appointment to the Special Project Standing Building Committee as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Carlos R. Olivieri Jr., Republican, 70, Brookmere Drive. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Vergara and Representative Carson seconds. Mr. Olivieri, you are here, and maybe you again can tell us a little. We did learn about you in our packet, but maybe you could tell us a little more about yourself and why you want to be on this.
Sure. Good evening, members of the RTM. Thank you. Just for the record, I'm no longer at 70 Brookmere Drive. I'm at 880 Old Post Road. I think Ms. Brown will take care of that, hopefully. I previously served on the Town Office of Liz Commission many years ago while the town was in the middle of building schools, which treatment plants and things of that nature. And I enjoyed that time on the commission, but unfortunately, due to my commitment to work in the city of New York, I was unable to continue with that committee. I'm now semi-retired, and I felt it was time to get back involved with some public service and to bring over fifty years of construction experience to the commission. And that experience has involved all of the facets of construction, including public sector work, both contracting for it and contracting in it. So I'm looking forward to helping the committee perform their duties and obligations for the town.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the, from the body? Everybody's still in a turkey coma, I guess. All right, let's take that to a vote then. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, congratulations. You are now a full member of the Standing Building Committee, Projects Committee.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you coming out to do this for us.
My pleasure. Have a good evening, everybody.
All right, item number nine is to here consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance. Resolve that the board appropriation entitled a resolution appropriating $3,729,800 for the cost associated with the replacement of the Duck Farm Road Bridge, authorizing a grant to reimburse $2,983,840 of such appropriation, authorizing the issue of bonds to finance a portion of such appropriation consisting of three pages, a copy of which is attached here to be and hereby is approved. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Schwartz? Let me switch the page and Representative Ferrence to put his hand up. Thank you. All right, I think we have Mr. Bill Hurley with us tonight to give us a little information on this project. So, Bill, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Mark. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Good evening, RTM members. My name's Bill Hurley, Fairfield Engineering Manager, requesting the resolution for the construction of the Duck Farm Road Bridge. As you mentioned, it's 3.729,800 for the construction phase. The town share would be 745,960. Duck Farm Road is a collector road that serves the neighborhood schools and highways. The bridge was constructed in 1959. It will have a seventy-two... The, it will have a 72-foot clear span and the same roadway width of 30 feet, and it will include a pedestrian sidewalk along the south side. The final design for the bridge project has received final approval to advertise for contract bidding, which is scheduled for December 2021, as required by the DOT. The proposed bridge will contain steel girders resting on concrete abutment footings. The bridge is a poor condition rating by the Connecticut DOT and needs replacement. The project, for those who've been around for a while, it has been listed on the capital improvement project, or what they call the waterfall chart, for several years via the design and now obviously the construction. The construction phase, as mentioned, was, it's anticipated for 2022, and it would be in the 3.73 million dollar range, based on the most recent project authorization letter. The town will receive 80% reimbursement of eligible costs, which would include construction administration, inspection, and the construction for the project. The bridge would have a 75-year service lifespan before it would need to be rehabilitated or replaced. The project is bonded as part of the capital project in, for 2022. We had two public informational meetings. One for the regular public information, and the other was the inland wetland meeting in 2019. We're hoping for one construction season, but it is possible it could get extended anywhere from, you know, eight months to 18 months, depending on if there's a winter shutdown or if there's some supply chain issue. There's a detour plan that will be utilized, and I'm here to answer any questions anybody would have.
Please write in the chat if you have any questions for Mr. Hurley. Representative Aikono, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Pam Aikono, District Eight, through you to Mr. Hurley. I was just wondering if you have a plan to keep the neighbors abreast with the project? If there's any mechanism for doing that, just in the surrounding Alma Hunter Ridge, I mean Hunter Road area? I know some neighbors were just concerned about staying up to date on the progress. Is there any plan to, to update that area, either through reverse calls or some, some type of nature?
We will, we will try to do that. There's a couple of different ways we can do that. We could, I'll check with the consultant, see if they can set up a website where then they would have, you know, periodic updates that they could refer to. If they are interested, they can always email me or contact me as another way of, you know, because some people are a lot more interested than others about the project. And then typically, before we start, you know, the, the police have a message board sign that we would put for the general public, and even some permanent signs well before that, so that people you know, there'll be one standard detour that, that is there, but we also will have reminders so that people are going, say, southwest, they could take a completely different route and kind of spread out the detour, if you know what I mean, so.
That would be fabulous. Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. I think the website probably would be the easiest. You know, that way, that would lessen the calls to your office. People could just be directed there. Thank you really mu- thank you very much.
I appreciate it. It worked out pretty good with Valley Road, so.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Mr. Hurley. That's all I have, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Representative Bateson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ed Bateson, District One. Bill, quick question. You said south side we have pedestrian.
Yeah, that would be a sidewalk. Correct.
Okay, sidewalk. Is that going to be elevated and separated from the roadway?
It would be, it would be six foot wide as part of our new zoning regulations, and it would be, it would be six inches high. It would be rested on a curb and then
Great. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Bateson. Representative Monahan, please.
Thank you. Veronica Monahan, District One. When the Mill Plain Bridge was built, it took a long time. Are there assurances that we're going to try to keep this one on schedule, just given that, you know, people try to pass through the street getting to work, school buses, et cetera?
Yeah, the town has, has made that clear to the state and will make it clear to the contractor, especially at a pre, a pre-construction meeting when, when we go out to bid and it's awarded. We are even going to try to expedite utility work where the town has a contract to do some clear, clearing of a couple of trees there as the utility lines would be pushed to the side so that we could get a crane in there to do the work for the bridge. And we're going to do that ahead of time so that unfortunately, in the past, a couple of utilities have delayed the projects, and the one on Mill Plain Road, there were, there were two issues. One that this one doesn't have is there was a transcontinental AT&amp;T line where if you hit that line, it's, you know, $50,000 a minute or whatever it is nowadays. So and then the, the other one was a special environmental, what we call swirl concentrator or gross particle separator. This one does not have that, so. Those are two things that we don't have to worry about that Mill Plain Road Bridge had.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Monahan. I do not see any other questions in the chat. Does anybody, Representative Greseva?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, Bill. How are you doing?
How about yourself?
Good. Two questions for you with regards to the pedestrian infrastructure, the sidewalk. Could you provide context as far as why there was not a sidewalk considered for the north side? I know that there's not a sidewalk on the north side of that road, but given the 75-year lifespan, I'm wondering why, why that was not considered, given how things can change over time.
Yeah, well, one of the main reasons is that, that parcel there has open space. There is no sidewalk on that side, and any repair access most likely would, would go through that, that area for upstream, if there were any blockages or anything like that. And so that, that's the main reason. I believe, I will double check and get back to you though, Andy, that I believe that there is a, there's still a shoulder there though, so like bike traffic and that kind of stuff. Or if people are comfortable, they can always, you know, if they're on that side, they don't necessarily have to cross the road. But your, the lack of the sidewalk there, the open space, there is a little bit of a drop-off before the bridge. So those were the, and access, those were the main reasons why. We definitely wanted to have at least one, though.
I understand. And then if I may, Mr. Moderator, I may have a second question?
There's no other in line, so go right ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. Real quick, Bill, and I apologize for not reading the inland and wetland commission minutes, so you may have already addressed this. For that bridge, what resiliency concerns were taken into account with regards to the span to address any future inland flooding events that may happen, any, any large storm events that may occur in that area and to not have that bridge be a blocker for the, for the flow?
Yeah, one of, one of the concerns that we have is, and anytime with a bridge, that's what everybody always asks, can we improve it? What happens is the bridge actually is getting elongated, and so we could theoretically pass more water through, through, through the opening there. However, we don't want to bomb out downstream, number one, and number two, by enlarging or elongating that bridge, the girders are a little bit, I'll call them thicker or longer, if you know what I mean, in height. And so therefore, it was a balancing act. They had to do several, what they call hydraulic iterations to make sure that they didn't increase or decrease the backwater or downstream flow. One of the things, though, that we do have is right now currently that bridge has a middle pier that tends to have, hangs up a lot of trash or debris, and so without that middle pier, the, and will have a clear opening, it will reduce chances of clogging. So there's, that's, that's what I would say was, is a big improvement.
Great. Thank you, Bill.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
And then if I may, Mr. Moderator, I just want to throw out a couple of things that are up and coming if any of the RTM members are interested. December 7th, and it is posted on our website, town website, there's a public informational meeting on the Greens Farm Road Bridge that we share with Westport, and that would be December 7th at 7 o'clock. We have tentatively scheduled, so we haven't posted it yet, but probably in the next day or two, we're just going to confirm it. Grassmere Post Neighborhood, that will be a public informational, an update for that project on December 14th at 6:30. And then there's also a post-road circle public information meeting on December 15th at 6:30. So pretty busy schedule there, but if you want to be interested, feel free to check the website or contact me if you're interested in any of those projects.
Fantastic. Thank you for the updates. We do have another question from Representative Garshoff.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Josh Garshoff, District Five. Mr. Hurley, following up on Representative Greseva's question, what about fish and aquatic organism passage? Will it be passable by, by fish and organisms?
Yes, and there's the DEP Fisheries had a comment, and we had to address that in, in the conservation and the permit to the DEEP.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Is there anybody else that has a question or comment for Mr. Hurley? It looks like I am seeing none, so we'll take this to a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, seeing none, that motion carries. Congratulations, Bill, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Everyone, have a good night.
Hopefully, we'll make it to some of your upcoming events.
Okay, thank you. Bye now.
Thank you. All right, item number 10, to consider an act upon any other matters presented to said meeting and which may be properly acted upon under the rules of the representative town meeting. Does anybody have anything else? I don't see anything else, so I would like to make a motion to adjourn. Representative Param seconded by Representative Haiti. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great weekend, well, our week. We'll see you next Monday again at the committee meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.